Um, so that might be everybody cuz um Caitlin's not gonna make it either. She's sick.
Oh.
Alright, uh, do we have a forum?
We don't have a quorum, no. So we can't, we can still discuss, but we can't vote on anything.
Um, was Tova, um, Tova's coming on too? Has she joined?
She is, but she's not, she's not on the commission, so she doesn't have any.
Right, I just didn't so, I just didn't see.
I'm here, but.
Hey, Tova!
Yay!
Uh, so I guess we can't vote to approve the minutes?
Nope.
Alright.
What do we do? We just wait till next time?
Yep. Anything that has to be voted on, stuff to be tabled.
Okay.
Well, man, I guess we can dive right into this thing, right?
Gotta grab a piece of paper, sorry.
Okay. Uh, Tova, by the way, I got your note, um, I hate to talk about other business, but your scholarship thing, I know why that happened, uh, don't worry, it got in the right place.
Okay.
Um. Back there?
I'm here, I'm just on mute so I can type.
Okay, okay. Um, alright, well, let's, let's, uh, let's go through these items that are, one at a time, they're on the agenda, we have to, we have to pass them in minutes, that'll get voted on the next meeting. Um. First item here, whole business is, uh, the recycling initiative. The trash talk. Uh, I was there, I thought it was good in some ways and maybe not so good in other ways, uh, I thought it was very informative. Um, but the tone might have been a little, a little negative, I don't know, what do you?
I was there too, what do, how do you mean, you thought it was negative?
Um. You know, I'm trying to think back, I, I got the feeling that, uh. We, sh- what was the, the woman's name who gave the talk?
Jan Heaton Jones.
I'm sorry?
Jan Heaton Jones.
Jan, oh, Jan, okay.
Jan.
She seemed to be, uh. I like the tone was, oh, you guys are doing a bad job and you need to do a better job recycling, uh.
Oh!
That was just a sense I got, and maybe other people didn't get the sense, but. Um, you know, I'm, I guess, I feel I'm trying hard, but, uh. Uh, and I don't have all the answers, but as we got into it, she was a lot more positive than the, the. The other parts were great, I thought it was very instructive, I had no idea the technology that was in the recycling.
Yeah, I, I thought, I loved the video and I, um, had asked that if we could, uh, pass the recording. Um, out on a public email, you know, and say, oh, if you missed the trash talk, here's the link to watch it. And Jen, and shut her computer down before, uh, for the night after that, and it wasn't able to be, um. Saved, so we can't do that unfortunately, but, um, but we've got lots of other links and things, um. She's working on updating the, um, email blurbs to put out in our town email, so. Um, I should get those from her soon, and then we can put those in, Patrick said he'd put them in a town email.
Did anybody, I mean, was I the only one? I, uh. And I don't, I don't want to sound too negative about this, cuz I thought overall it was good, uh. But I got a feeling we were being lectured a little bit.
Someone, I don't remember who, but it was like in, kind of an in passing thing, I was having a conversation with somebody the, the other day, and they had echoed those same. Kind of sentiments that they thought it was like they're almost being like scolded.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good way to put it, I said, I felt a little bit like we were being scolded. Uh, when, hey, we're, we're attending, cuz we're taking, we wanna do a better job. Um. Anyway, but.
That's interesting to hear that, I, I mean, I haven't talked to anybody else about it, so I don't know, but, um.
I'll tell them, I thought, I thought it was good, I, 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 I thought it was, um. Um, very worthwhile to have.
Yeah, and then.
The best, the best part was all, I didn't, I had no idea the technology that goes into this.
Yeah, and I didn't, I didn't know, um, a lot of the details of that either, which I think is really great for people to see.
And finally, now I understand why you can't recycle black plastic.
Yeah.
It's always a mystery to me.
Yeah, me too, cuz nobody had ever explained exactly why we couldn't, I was like, well, what's the difference between, you know what I mean, what exactly is the difference? It is the lack of color.
Yeah, so, I mean, if, if anybody missed the talk, the reason you can't recycle black plastic is because they have, they have a device that, uh, reads the colors of the items. And sweeps them aside if, if they're not, if they're plastic and recyclable, black happens to be the same color as the conveyor belt. So they had to, uh, eliminate that as a color that got swept aside. Or else it would have screwed things up with the conveyor belt. Alright, the, uh, the five cent recyc- recyclable can thing. Um. I s- I have run into resistance from Albert and so has, um, Lorenzo, you know.
And I have too, and Patrick has too.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what we do, I, I, I found out, Lorenzo told me that. Albert does not work for the town. And, and, and he, he doesn't work for H R A. He works for the company that hauls the stuff away to H R A. So, evidently the way it works is the town's contracted with H R A to handle our recyclables and our waste. And they've also contracted with a separate entity that hauls the stuff up there. And Albert works for that separate en- entity.
Know that, I thought he worked for the town.
So did I, yeah.
I knew he didn't work for H R A. Um, but I do have to say that he does not participate in any of the meetings for the transfer station attendants. Or, um, their monthly meetings or any of that stuff, he doesn't participate.
There's a monthly meeting?
There's a monthly meeting for the transfer station attendants, and a lot of them are the same ones, the, a lot of the transfer station attendants in other towns. Are part of the task force, the recycle, the regional rety- recycling task force that I'm a part of.
Okay.
A lot of them are the, the actual, uh, transfer station managers and attendants. And so I get to hear a lot of information from actual, you know, attendants like Al.
Are they, um, is it countywide or statewide?
Um, regional, it's just for H R A, so it's just by the, um, towns in this region. Um, I'm not sure if it's state, I, I think, I don't think it's state, I think it's just this, uh, county. Um, there's about, I think about twenty or thirty maybe towns. Including our neighboring towns, except for Washington is not part of H R A. But I'll ask that if you'd like to know that, Tova, I don't know.
Uh, yeah, I don't, I don't know how we, I don't know what to do to bring him on board. I, I thought Patrick could just sit on and tell him he's gonna do this, but evidently he can't.
Yeah, Patrick said that he would talk to him and he said we're gonna do this, but then the latest that I got from Patrick this week. Was, um, because I said, what about the C W Resources, who was previously collecting? The company that was previously collecting, we've been working with them for, I think, fifteen years or something. And we were waiting for them to finish updating their warehouse. And they said we should be complete with that in January and then we'll start collecting again. And, um, the brief information that I got from. Uh, Patrick was that they are not going to be collecting. And that he and Judy called about ten different places and to no success, so they said. Put it back into, uh, resolution to try to find maybe a volunteer group that wants to do it, but. Um, I think pretty, pretty, uh, surely I can say. From Barbara Henry's past suggestion and also Jen Heaton Joan, Jones, um, when they, the Boy Scouts did it years ago. Um, that it was a disaster behind the market because. It was just too cumbersome to collect everything and stuff getting blown around and into the woods and there was rats and, so I would say that. If a organization or a group is going to collect it. That it would need to be still collected at the transfer station and like you said, we have resistance from Al, so. I don't know what to do either, I'm gonna ask, um, about it some more tomorrow at the task force meeting.
Well, and I suppose it could be done at the transfer station, but he doesn't have to, he doesn't have to be any part of it, it could be, it could be somebody else who does the volunteering.
Well, that was Lorenzo's thought. Is to have like a day, maybe like once a month or something up at the transfer station, but I guess the hard part is gonna be finding a group that'll. Take that stuff and dispose of it, you know?
Well, if we could, maybe even an individual, because the two men that I spoke to, the one man who handles it in Reading. And then the other guy who handles it in, um.
That was, I guess, Albert's problem, he had a, he had to lift the crates and he had a. Um. He had to take care of it.
Yeah.
Before it got picked up, and then they weren't that reliable for picking it up, and this is.
Yeah. So, um, maybe we could do that, have a collection day?
Yeah, people. Yeah, well, y- you know, this is only people that actually go to the transfer station. So, I mean, maybe if it was done on a, uh. Once a week, I mean, you know, just bring your, somebody picks it up on us on Saturday, so it's, you don't get a big accumulation. And then you take it somewhere and you. You find out if there's some way you can recycle it in bulk, so one person doesn't get, doesn't have to sit there, I don't think you wanna do anything where you're feeding it into the machine, I don't think all day.
No, there's a place I do know, the guy in Reading takes it to a collection place in Stratford, but that's an hour away from here, I think.
Alright, yeah.
Um, but I'll see, I'm gonna see if there's some other options for places to take it and. Um, I guess we just have to find a person or a group that would be with.
You think we could buddy up with the guy in West, in, uh, Reading who does it, cuz Reading's closer than Stratford and he can.
He offered to do it for December while we didn't have our other collection of company. Um, he said he'd be willing to do it if we had a full load, which was so many pounds or bags or something like that, which we don't have. Um, and so, and it would be an hour for him to drive here and pick it up and then drive it to Stratford, which is another hour or something, and he was willing to do that for Gi- for December, but. He can't do it all the time. So, that's just where we have to leave it, I guess, for now, is we've got to find the, the person or, or group to come and.
Yeah, you know, when you, when you think about it, to get. To get somebody to volunteer to take it from, let's say, the transfer station, meet this guy somewhere and he takes it up to Stratford. Is that gonna, hey, you know, when you factor in the person's time. Is it gonna? Is this, is this a, uh, you know, money losing proposition if you?
Yeah, well, plus they have to have a truck or something too, to haul it.
No, no, I just.
Can we talk to other towns and see maybe if they wanna do a joint collaboration and then maybe, maybe it could be a paid position for someone, you know? Uh, cuz I think it's worth it to the people that, you know, benefit from it.
That's a great idea, Erin, I'll ma- I'll mention that at the meeting tomorrow too, because we have all the other, uh, recycling coordinators from all the other towns on the call.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a, I think it's great to find out what the other towns are doing, gives us some idea of where to go.
Well, mostly they're all individuals or like the two that I spoke to, or a group, a volunteer group. That does it in all the other towns, um, from what I know. But I'll see if there's, if they want to, you know, join together somehow.
Yeah.
The guy in New Milford takes it to Big Y and he said that he wouldn't, he just couldn't do it for us too. So I don't, I think that's out, um, but some of the other towns nearby, maybe we could figure out something. So I'll ask tomorrow at the meeting, but, um. Again, we, uh. Have to make it easy, easy for everybody as far as like, you know, Al's issues and. I think that's a great idea to do one day a week or something like that.
Yeah, I think it's easy for, it's easy for the people in town to go up to the transfer station, you just save their five cent deposit things, take them up there. Um. It's, the hard part comes after that. The, what did you say about the guy in, in the move for thing? He, he, there's a guy in a move who takes, he picks it up and takes it to the big one?
The big Y, he says.
Hmm, and he sits there and feeds it into the machine?
I guess so, yeah, I don't, I don't know detail for, that, that detail for sure, but he said that he, he wouldn't be doing it for our town. Cuz he's a small truck or something and he said he.
You'll report back next month and see what you come up with, we'll all give it some thought.
But maybe if we could have like when we have the shredded days and that sort of thing, if we could just say, okay, Saturdays. There's a truck here and you can put all your five cent deposits on that.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
And if we have somebody to take it. Um. But the guy in Stratford, uh, who set, he separates every single piece of five cent deposit, um, and he. Gives the guy in Reading who does it, he's called the can man in Reading. Um, he gives him, uh. A super great price on, I forget what he gives him, but anyway, the guy in Reading, he gets one cent and then he gives the four cents to. Um, the town or gives that back to whoever he gives.
I think that would be totally reasonable if someone was willing to do that.
And he, he, does he, and he wants the plastic and the glass, uh, plastic and the can separate?
He'd, what do you mean, he wants them separate?
You, you know, um, what we're doing now is you get the glass goes, the plastic. Can thing goes in one and then the cans go in others, so it's separated when it gets pulled away.
Yeah, I don't know, that's something I'll have to ask, if he just takes it all there to him separated already, or if they have, um. From what I, when I spoke to the man on the phone, he said, when I take the stuff up to Red, I mean, up to Stratford. That that guy separates everything and counts every single piece. So he doesn't miss a five cent piece, he counts all of them, he said he's very thorough, so I don't know if he has some sort of special separating machine. That might be easier for people too, if they can just throw it all in one.
Yeah, I, I, I believe, I'm not sure this, but I believe that the big Y, those machines they have now. They take both the plastic and the cans. You don't have to go to a separate machine for cans, you just put everything in one machine and it can distinguish between the plastic and the aluminum cans.
Yeah, and I don't know if somebody's willing to take it to one of the grocery stores and do that either.
It's a lot of work.
Yeah.
I used to do it, but now I just leave the thing there and let, you know, let somebody else do it.
Well, I was thinking that, um, from the money that we were gonna be getting, um, starting in April from the, um. What is that fee, the fee that's charged on the nips, the little, um, alcohol bottles?
Yeah, yeah.
Alcohol bottles. We got, last year we had seven hundred dollars, um, revenue from that, and so we'll be getting probably that's a similar amount, or that's gives us a general amount of how much we be getting. And we're, we are able to use that money, they're giving it to us, I think, in April and then six months later or something like that, so we should be getting. Payments, um, for that, and so maybe, and it's to be used for other. Recycling initiatives or recycling things projects, so possibly we could utilize that somehow, but, um. Again, I don't know if it's worth it, like you were saying.
Where do those things go now? When you, when you, people take those to the, to the transfer station, those little?
No, they, they, um, go in the trash.
They go in the trash, but the trash, they get separated out from the trash and.
No, because they're smaller than two inches, remember the, um.
Yeah, so how, how, how do we get any money out of this thing if they're, oh, because it's.
They collect that, um, I forget what they call it, it's the fee that the store charges every time.
I see, I see, I see, I get it.
And, and then they pay the towns that fee, that's a five cent fee on all of those nips bought, purchased.
How do they, how do I know which town gets which money?
Because we only have one, one package store and then, uh.
They base it on the sale of the package store?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I got it.
Our little town, we only have one package store, but we made, you know, some of the other towns have thousands and thousands of dollars, you know, like thirty thousand dollars and that they get back, but we got seven hundred. But, but it's something to do something with.
Yeah.
But I'll get some more information tomorrow and, and that's all we can do for now, because.
From, from an ecological standpoint, I mean, couldn't, in the interim. Couldn't we just, um, say to people, uh, you know, have something in the newsletter? Suggesting that they take it, the, their recyclables to Big Y or something, you know, I mean, I know that, I understand, I totally understand that there's the. The, the revenue that we're getting for, from the cans for, that is charitable and, and that sort of thing, but, um, just from the ecological standpoint. Why not just put something in the, in the newsletter saying in the interim, you might wanna bring your, um, you know, your recyclables. It, to Big Y or, or, obviously they have. A, um, collection site there.
Yeah, totally agree, Tova, and I will do that, I will, uh, put that out there to, um, be included in that message so that people.
You know, you can always find somebody willing to take, if you say, you personally say, hey, I'm kinda busy, do you want my bottles and cans? And they say, sure, you know, and. I, I, I've done that a number of times, it works. Um, can we move on here to Pollinator Pathway? Uh. Uh, I, I, I was at a, um, a meeting kind of at the, the, um, Land Trust wanted to. Call us together, the people that run that original steering committee for the, uh, uh, Pollinator Pathway Initiative. And they, the, they had a suggestion that we redo something in the, we do something in the spring to kind of as a follow up to what we did last year. And, uh, the garden club was interested. I thought, you know, hey, we could be interested too, because, you know, this is just a feather in our cap and plus we can push this along. Um. And I mentioned this to Erin, um. The idea they had was to do a couple of different things, maybe bring in a speaker, have a, have some garden tours. Uh, it's kind of still in the talking discussion stages, but, um, there is, there is another steering committee meeting next week. Uh, the issue came up about funding if we brought in any speakers. And I said, uh, you know, have the Conservation Commission maybe could. We've got some money, we could contribute, and I know we can't make a commitment, so we don't have a forum. Uh, a quorum, I'm sorry, but, um, um, I thought I'd bring it up. Get, you know, people's thoughts about it. It, it, it could dovetail with the, um. The event that the garden club puts on in the, in the spring in May with the, the, uh, they sell plants and raise money. Uh. So there does seem to be some enthusiasm in the town about pushing the Pollinator Pathway thing along, so.
Yeah.
Opened up for discussion, any, any thoughts? Uh. Tova, your name came up, uh, someone would be a great, uh, resource if we could. Do a, uh, a, a garden tour there, but, uh, you know, we can't rely on you for everything.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I was telling Erin that the garden tour is, is, a garden tour is difficult, um, just because. It's, um, it's hard to, you know, get a garden up to. Prime that I would want it to be to invite the public to come and I, I, you know, so busy traveling and, and. At that time of year and, and producing articles and that sort of thing, but I do have an idea and. Along a, a totally different tangent on this, and that is, what if we, um, what if. At, um, that event that you were talking about or, or, or some of the spring events, what if we had, um. A representatives from the Conservation Commission from, um, Pollinator Pathway, et cetera. Just helping people identify, um. Plants that are, are native, you know, I, I, it sort of advertised as, um, you can bring. Uh, pictures or sprigs of these plants, I think that there's a lot of confusion about it and. I think that would be extremely helpful for people that, just the i- identification thing. And, um, you know, while I'm on, on mute here, I just wanted to say, um. That, you know, I'd be glad to lecture again or, you know, do something like that, it's just, um, the whole can of worms of, of.
I understand.
Writing all those people onto the property, um, and having it be absolutely. Um, immaculately as beautiful as I would want it to be.
Uh, I totally understand that, uh, you know. The first thing that Tati said to me is we can't have a garden tour here because I can never get the garden in shape that, you know, want people to see it, so. And you're light years ahead of us in that regard, so I, I totally understand. Uh, there was a, um. A speaker that we thought, that Tati thought would work well, uh. And he would be very expensive, he could do it, uh, kind of a Zoom talk on native plants, he's into, uh. Um. He, he might take native planting and put them in pots, or perennials that go in pots, that would attract, uh, pollinators.
That's really good idea, and I, I've done, um, with earth tones. I've done articles on that, it, it can be really beautiful, I'm, I mean, there's no reason why, and, and. Tony, that's just underscores the whole concept that I think we're all trying to, um. Uh, amplify for people is that the concept that you don't need a whole lot of property to do this, that. Um, you, everybody, everybody can do this and, you know, you don't need a whole lot of land and you don't have to. Uh, you know, get out there and dig, 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 you could, you know, everybody can make a little difference, which has been. You know, I, I, I think that can make it so much more popular on, on, you know, such a broader level. To, to de- kind of downsize it, so I think that's a really good idea, so Tony, what if we did something like had, um. A demonstration on a combo, you know, um, maybe, maybe got the earth tones people to come and. Uh, you know, they are big into habitat, so they could have like the wetland planter and they could have the sunny planter. They could have the shady planter for, um, with pollinator friendly plants, what do you think of that?
Uh, I, I think that's a great idea, I think, uh, I'll mention, I'll mention it to Tati, she's, she's got a garden club meeting tomorrow, I'll see if she can float that idea. Um. She's, she al- she also had the idea, this, um. Um, she had the idea of something along the lines of, I'm not sure of bringing, you know, kind of selling these plants. And doing a demonstration. At this event they have in May, uh, so people can get, you know, people could start off small, they're not gonna bite off a big piece that, uh, is difficult to. For someone who is, wants to get their feet wet, to get really involved with this. So, you know, you, you take a, uh, something, a perennial, you put it in a pot, it's pretty easy to deal with.
But again, you could do it as habitats too, or, um, I think there's, uh. I think it would be really very valuable, however you do it, just for people to recognize, you know, just visually say. I see that plant, I saw that plant at that event, and now I know it's native. And now I know it's pollinator friendly and, you know, it's just that recognition thing, so any way you can. Any way you can do that, make that happen, I think you could. Either have a lecture devoted to it, or you could have a, um, have somebody at an event, um, doing, you know, uh. I, I said combos, but maybe you think that's too complicated, maybe just potted. You know, potted for pollinator friendly plants is enough.
Yeah, I know. Um, Tati also floated the idea, she, she got this thing on, uh. These little tubes that, uh, carpenter bees or, uh, masonry bees nest in. Uh, because evidently masonry bees are good pollinators. Um. They're, they, I, we have them a lot, we have a lot of them around here and then, you know. I think your initial reaction when you see one is you get freaked out cuz you think they're big and gonna bite you, but they, evidently they don't. I think your initial reaction when you see one is you get freaked out because you think they're big and gonna bite you, but they definitely they don't. I I guess they really have to be provoked in order to get stung. Uh, I've never gotten stung by one and they fly all around, so.
Well, there there again, Tony, I mean, I think we know that most of the native bees don't have enough. Oomph in their stinger to penetrate skin.
Okay.
Um, they just don't, they can't, they don't have that ability to penetrate our skin. To give us a sting that's gonna hurt us on the native bees. And that's a good educational, you know, that I think that again, that's something people need to know.
These little tubes, you you and you just, you. We got some instructions on how to do this. You get a little box, you put them in there. It's not very big. Uh, it's pretty easy to do, so that could be something that they.
You can, you can do something as easy as you can do something as easy as the. Uh, you know, um, some of the uh, invasives. You know, I know we're not supposed to be saying anything good about invasive plants, but. Uh, if you chop them up and put them, you know, make a little. Bundle of them, they are really good for mason, for, you know, bees to make little nests and.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, um, they do it with all kinds of things. I've got some great pictures of. Folks that just stick them into, just think, I just stick them into a. What am I thinking of? Those concrete blocks that, what are they called?
Um, I know what you're talking about.
Or foundations.
Cinder blocks, right?
Cinder blocks, right. Thank you. Sin, they just stick them into cinder blocks and, you know, vertically, I mean horizontally. And there they are, you know, a little hotel. That could be a great project.
You know, what we could do is is we, because Lorenzo was talking about this earlier, we have Earth Day and Arbor Day coming up. So we could do something at the park, say like with Mike Rice, who does a lot of education about bees and beehives. We could do something, you know, with earth tones to demonstrate. We could have a guest speaker. We could do something like in the park for Earth Day. We could do trash pickup competitions and all sorts of stuff, but just to kind of. Bridge that with the uh, pollinator plants. We could do something along those lines.
When is?
What was Earth Day and Arbor Day? I can look.
Yeah, I I know they're they're like late April, right?
There, yeah, there, I think they're like only a week apart.
Okay.
So Earth Day is April twenty second. Arbor Day. Is.
Which is not a weekend.
No, and Arbor Day is April twenty ninth, which is a Friday, so we could always do it like April, April thirtieth, like that's Saturday or something.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I'm doing a bunch of, I I'm doing, I'm doing a lecture at. At the library on Wednesday. Uh, you know, the my maximizing space in the garden lecture that for Earth Day. And then I'm giving three lectures at, I'm bringing Pamparog Woods for. Um, Earth Day during the week, but I'm free on the weekend.
I think that's a great idea, Erin, to have. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, because my computer is wacky sometimes. Um, we had talked about that some years ago with the Conservation Commission and. Having some sort of like Earth Day celebration fair, that sort of thing. We could combine a lot of those things together, I think. And just to throw it in there too. Paula at the library that does the children's program in the community garden in the summer. She had to make the mason bee houses or pollinator houses. She had the kids make, so there's, there's all kinds of projects like that that you could have people make out of found objects at their house. Or, you know, common things that they could reuse and recycle that way too, and then. Also, you know, for, so you can do them complex or or less complex, you know, there's, there's something for everybody to be able to make. So I think that.
Where where would we do this?
I think Erin said at the park, I think that would be fun to do that at the park because you could have. Um, we had talked about it, when we talked about it years ago, we talked about having it at the town hall so that. We could have, you know, like vendors or speakers and that sort of thing all around out there, but I think the park's a better idea.
I do, I do. It's gonna sound great. Uh, does anybody want to volunteer to kind of flesh this out and then we can take it up and vote on the next meeting? And if everybody's in, we'll just move on and do it.
I can do like a brief kind of maybe like day of events, sort of I like proposal, like a. Brief one-page thing, but beyond that, I I don't know how much time I'm gonna have.
Well, you 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 could, Erin, if you could just flesh the bare bones out and.
Yeah.
Maybe we can jockey back and forth with it, because I can do some editing, send it back to you.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Want to be involved, they'll send it to you, you can make your comments, and then then we'll have something to discuss at the next meeting.
Because then we would have to set it in place at the next meeting because then the.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we're gonna, the next meeting is March. If you don't vote on it and decide to do it in March, it ain't gonna happen.
Right. I think that would be great to do that. And we could do, possibly like Tova was suggesting, do someone to have someone with pictures. And and knowledge to point out. Um, native plants and invasive plants, and we could do that also at the garden club.
Park, yeah.
We could do it both times, so.
Okay, if you do it around one, yeah.
If somebody's willing to do that.
All right, let's 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 do that, the the. Something back earlier to the Pollinator Pathway thing. That sort of joint initiative with. A garden club and the Conservation Commission and Bridgewater's involved. And the Land Trust is involved. I have a meeting on that next Thursday. Uh, I'll tell them what we discussed tonight. And I'll tell them, look, we couldn't vote on appropriating any money for this, but I think if we have some good ideas. Um, and we can come up with, at this meeting, I'll bring them back. We'll discuss them at the next Conservation Committee meeting. And maybe we can get some uh, some uh, approval of some monies to to do this, but I can't commit anything unless I get. Everybody on the on the Conservation Division agrees, so I'll just say it's a possibility and we'll. Uh, people are, seem to be enthusiastic about bringing in speakers. Um, and the garden tour thing is probably not. Not a great idea. I personally don't think it is either. I think. Uh, it would be better to 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 do it as a series of lectures and. Kind of coordinate it with the plant sale that the Garden Club puts on in May.
I think that's better for for that too, to bring people's attention back to the Pollinator Pathway in the spring. You can't be doing garden tours anyway. I mean, at that time of year, I mean, garden.
Yeah, the Land Trust may want to do something.
You're so right, because I mean, a garden, just the whole logistics of getting a garden ready for an early. Early season tour, you just don't have enough weeks to do it, you know, I mean, it it it's it's just almost impossible.
I think, I think, I think the Land Trust perhaps is interested. In showcasing the stuff they do. So they may push to have a tour of some of the native plantings that they've put in this, the ones. Uh, River Road, River Road Preserve.
Yeah.
And also the, there's the, they're involved with the garden, it's. There's a native planting garden uh, right near the senior center across the street from Booth, isn't there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the last time I looked, it was pretty shabby, but.
Hmm, it's not a good advertisement.
Anyway, that that'll come up next Thursday, okay. Next item that's on the under old business is. The Santa Energy Proposal. I I don't know what 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 more we can do on this, I mean.
Well, that's why, that's why it's in there. So Lorenzo just wanted. Uh, me to basically say that at this point, there's nothing more that we are gonna do with it unless. Patrick asks us to do more research on it. Now it's it's pretty much in the town's hands as to what's gonna happen there. Uh, but he did say that we should try and maybe push if it does go through. Up up by the transfer station, we should try and make it pollinator plant friendly. Because a lot of solar fields do a lot of pollinator plant friendly plants in there as well. Because it's it's perfect. It's a wide open field. It's perfect, so.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, maybe I'll raise that issue at that meeting I'm having next week, the Steering Committee meeting. Because there may be people on the Land Trust who are a little more knowledgeable about this, but I I I have read that. In solar fields, there's stuff, there is a lot of stuff they plant in between the roads when they have the solar fields. They do, they do, you guess you have to have roads so people can walk around and service the equipment. I mean, there are. I guess out in some certain parts of the country, they're actually growing lettuce and booby in the solar fields.
I've seen really beautiful ones with just huge rows of nepeta that look like, you know, catnip that look like. Almost like lavender fields. I mean, they're just beautiful and between the collectors.
Okay.
It's it's just, you know, a win-win sort of situation.
It could be a win-win situation, because if if you don't plant anything, you're gonna get weeds growing, have to get mowed. This would be a kind of a low maintenance operation for for Santa Energy or whoever actually gets the contract to install this.
So Lorenzo had mentioned that at the last meeting, so what does that mean though as far as? Would we be just giving that to Santa Energy as a proposal to do this? Or would we be in charge of doing that, planting with, you know, like according to however they need to have their equipment set up? Or or what would be, what is that exactly?
I, as I said, I think I would like to get some input from the. The Land Trust. I'll bring it up at the Thursday meeting I have next week. And see if they have any suggestions on how we could do this. How how much involvement do we do we have to have, or can we just pass this proposal along to to Santa Energy? Who, I I I don't know. I don't know who we actually have to have the responsibility of doing this, but.
Yeah.
It's something that you'd want to get. Whoever's gonna do this solar field, you want to get their their thoughts on it. I'm sure this issue has come up before if they put in solar fields in other towns.
Yeah, I'd just be curious. I think it's a terrific idea. I'd just be curious who's actually gonna do it.
Who's gonna do it, yeah, yeah. That I don't know. Again, I'll float it, I'll float it next Thursday. See what, see what. The Land Trust says. Farm Tour Guide, that's next under.
Well, so there's a whole list Lorenzo had. Uh, he just kind of threw them out to me last night. Basically, he wants to. Narrow it down to like, you know, two to three projects that we focus on for the year. Um, he, so the ones that are listed on the agenda were the ones, uh, some of the ones I think that he, let me try and. Where is it? Uh, or some of the ones that he had just thrown out there, certainly not an exhaustive list, so if anybody has anything else. They want to do, but we can't vote on it tonight anyway. Uh, so.
Well, the Farm Tour Guide, that's been a project of mine that I was working on for some several years now. Because of Sustainable CT and I just wanted to have just a little trifold brush brochure kind of thing. Like the Land Trust has with our all of our local farms and a little map. So that somebody could just go and get this, especially all the new people, all the new residents. They could just go and pick it up at town hall or anywhere, post office, all the places around in town. And then just drive around to all the town farms and and the area and get their, get their produce and their. Meat and all that kind of stuff, so. I have to go back and revisit it too. But there is a list, um, there's a list of all the farms that are. It might be on the, on the. Land Trust page or related to that. I'll have to go back and find it because there was, there was a list of all the farms that were, you know, in other towns too. But. That was not, that was something that they had put together. And it was just an online thing. I want an actual piece of paper that has like a little map that shows people where they are. Um, so I would, I would like to, I'd be willing to work on that and try to get that out there. And I have friends who might be willing to. Produce those, to print them.
Just, just a thought, I mean. It 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 it's, first of all, it changes a lot, but not very many of the farmers that I. Interviewed actually allow, you know, let people come to their property to. Uh, you know, most of them sell at other venues and and there's, you know, sort of insurance issues with that. And that sort of thing, so. Um, it, I mean, I just urging you to, you know, check in with the farmers and make sure they actually. Can have people on their property and but a lot of them, a lot of our farmers have their produce available in town. At other venues, you know, like that seemed to be much more of the norm. That they would sell through the market or several other places that they would say. They said to me, well, we sell at thus and so place, so.
We could put that in there too. We could say, you know, like whatever Riverbank Farm and say. This is where you can get their produce and have a list.
Yeah, do we want to, we want to make this, give give the local farms an opportunity to basically to advertise.
Yeah.
Tell us what they sell and where they sell.
Yeah, and I surely, I totally would only put ones that would allow people to come there, like Riverbank, they don't sell anything from the farm right there. As far as I know. Um, so I would definitely not put them on the map unless they had an actual store or place that they sold stuff, but. Just to have people be aware of all of the different places that are available.
Yeah, well, they need, they wouldn't go on the map, but they would, it's nice to know that Riverbank does sell stuff at various places.
They they do at the town garage or not the town. Markey's Place, yeah, yeah.
Um, okay, moving right along here. Uh, backpack blowers, I think this maybe is more important than we think. Uh, and the reason I say that. Um, I. I I did a little Google search of. Backpack blowers and towns and ordinances and things like that. And I see there were a couple of, you know, a couple of articles in the News Times. I think it was one of the News Times, maybe in Voices. Uh, about this thing that came up at, I think it was Patrick's first selectman's meeting. Somebody complained about the noise of backpack blowers. And the Conservation Commission somehow got identified. I think Lorenzo had something to do with this, got identified as. We're gonna be the ones who look into this and come back with some sort of recommendation. At least that was the implication. So I think we know an answer to the first selectman's office about a, what should we do? Uh, I did, I did some, you know, I I talked to a landscaper I know. Uh, and I, um. Jason, Jeremy, I'm sorry, Jeremy Johnson. And. He real, he he understands the kind of the issue here, that. These things make a lot of noise and the, there's this perception that the backpack blowers contribute a lot to pollution. They do, the newer ones are better than the older ones, and I think that's misrepresented sometimes in the media that. The newer versions of the backpack blowers are not as bad. Uh, but he said it's just totally out of the question for him to convert to electric. It just, you know, electric backpack blowers, he said. There are other, you know, for the homeowner, yeah, because you you get a couple hours and, you know, your battery runs out, but. For him, he's got to get in and out of a property and do it, and he said. Um, he brings. Um he brings big crews into these properties and yeah, with all the equipment running, it makes a lot of noise. So, you know, I'm not sure what we do here. I I checked to see what other towns do. Um there are other towns, particularly in California, that have totally banned uh leaf blowers. Um some towns in New York have banned them as well. Uh sometimes the bans are seasonal. Now, the only town in Connecticut that seems to have a tight restriction on backpack blowers is Greenwich. Um and I think it's pretty much on quarter acre properties. I think in Greenwich, you got the issue of a lot of small houses on quarter acre lots and people complain that uh it was noise. I think what Greenwich does is you're only allowed to have one backpack blower operating at a time. Um so, you know, I don't know what we do, uh but I think we do have to respond somehow to what this. Request was from first electman's office, so we would look into it.
To- Tony, Tony, here's an idea. What, why, why not just make it an uh or would it be possible to make it just an educational? A consciousness raising point that, you know, make people aware of it and. Um just, you know, not ban anything, not get anybody's hackles up, but just. Get it out there that uh this is something that we are, we should be concerned about and that. The these are the facts about it. Um and and that maybe your property doesn't have to be the immaculate conception, you know? Maybe it could be more natural habitat. I just an FYI, just had to tell you about this. I was just reading about this in a British magazine. Just yesterday and it was the most brilliant quote I've seen in a long time. And it it wasn't exactly about what you're talking about, but it was, it's kind of similar. It said. Uh it was somebody talking about an a a natural garden in a Mediterranean area and they said. You know, when this, when the grass is all brown and everything is brown. That's when this garden is really the most valid. Because if it was green, when there was a drought, it would be totally a non-valid garden. It would be just against everything that nature's about. So, you know, just consciousness raising about going with nature.
Um I think that's, that's an excellent suggestion. When I I discussed this with Jeremy. And um I said, you know, you do a lot of these big properties, you bring in a big crew, five or six guys with all kinds of equipment. I said, maybe, you know, it would be helpful if people. People were educated, that they didn't have to make every bit of their garden or every bit of their yard clear of leaves. If there should be some spots where you could put leaves and he seemed amenable to that. He un- he understands the concept. So I I think, I think that's, that's a good idea. I think it's an excellent idea, uh.
We could also include that, um if we get a little more information about it, we could also include it in the Earth Day thing at the park. You know, informational stuff to say, here's this information about the backpacks and. The environmental factor about it.
I think I should, since I took, I seem to be, I the one who took the initiative on this, maybe I should call. Um Patrick and ask him, you know, what was the source of this complaint? And my guess is that it was not an individual running one backpack blower, but it was a crew. Uh and I I suspect this because my neighbor was pretty far away from me, brings in a crew. For like a full day and a half in October. And I'm telling you, you know, I know it's gonna end in a day and a half, but at the end of the day, my ears are ringing. He's got this equipment going constantly. The leaf blowing equipment. And I went up there once and the guys on the crew, they 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 apologized. They said, you know, we know it makes a lot of noise, but we're gonna be out of here tomorrow at noon. I said, okay, I can live with that. Uh so that's where I suspect the complaint came from. Uh it may have come from just one or two individuals. Uh another possibility is if this thing ever escalated, maybe you've gotta have a uh. Uh you know, an old, a town meeting, um a public hearing on this, but I I don't think it's gonna get that far. But I would like to talk to the first electman's office and see, you know, tell them what I've learned. And ask, you know, what kind of direction does he want us to go in? Would it be a good idea to have some sort of a uh um a presentation or some sort of an instructional? Talk about um the benefits of not trying to. As Togo said, not trying to make your lawn into some sort of, you know, golf course looking immaculate piece of property. Um I'll see what he says. Well, we can't go on anything tonight, so I I think it's gonna, you know, I'm gonna have to wait until our next meeting and then uh. See where we can go with this. I'll I'll discuss it with the first electman's office. Any thoughts?
Just to add to that, uh I know Patrick was at a meeting with um some other people about that backpack thing. And he was just mentioned, he just mentioned to me that it's not only the the noise, but the um emissions. Um or the, I think we're running it for an hour. I can't remember the exact data, but. Running a backpack of gas backpack for an hour was the same emissions as something crazy like.
So you you were in a meeting with Patrick where this was discussed cuz I was.
Was at a meeting about this with some other towns or something, um other selectmen or other people that had. I think that had been successful in their to implementing a ban on them or whatever, or they were just discussing it. And I know that he said that the amount of emissions that that produces in just an hour of use is just tremendous at some.
You know, you know, I I I said this earlier, but I'm not sure that that's based on some of the newer equipment that that has come out. Some of the newer backpack blowers. Uh the newer ones uh are four-stroke engines. Even though you mix gas, you mix oil in with the gas, there's still four-stroke engines. And it's a, it's a technical detail, but it does reduce the amount of pollutants that come out of the exhaust. Uh considerably less than, let's say, a uh a chainsaw. Or a weed whacker. But they they those devices don't run as long as a backpack. We could have a backpack going for hours on end.
Well, I think we just have like, um you're saying the awareness of it at the Earth Day thing. Maybe have a poster or something with pictures of them, you know, and um and then have the information just to make people aware of them, you know.
We uh, yeah, that, I it might, it it might be a little more practical for homeowners to switch over to electric backpack.
Yeah, and just have that suggestion there and say, oh, did you know about, you know, electric? Leaf blowers and the state, I know I went, there was a, something I found from the state.
Um they had freed up some money to uh provide incentives for people to buy these, but they pushing it for. On the local companies like Craftsman and um Black and Decker. Those are local companies that make backpack blowers. It may not be the best ones, but those are the ones that are made in Connecticut, so that's where the the kind of that money to fund this came, you know, was. This would be earmarked for their products.
Yeah, Lorenzo had mentioned that in a previous meeting. If there was some sort of incentive for people to switch over, that would be great, but I don't know. I don't know how that would happen.
It it, we could, I think the only feasible way it could happen is it would have to be with either Black and Decker. Craftsman and there's some other, this is one, it's a, it's a merger of a couple of companies that make backpack blowers.
I I think, you know, you're just, I think it's that's sort of complicating it. I think people just wanna do the right thing, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
And if you, if you give, if you educate them, they'd be glad to to, you know, entertain it. Uh I I'm sure with all the people, new people moving in, they they need to buy this equipment and maybe they. You know, just need to be a little bit educated about it. They might come from the city and they don't know.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Yeah, okay. Um, okay, I'll continue to push on this. Thank you, Tova. Good suggestion. That one?
Yeah, so. Uh yeah, Lorenzo didn't know if we wanted to do Bat Month again, um. I think we could do the bat house build again, like we did, you know, at the tractor parade, but I think to try and do the month-long. Uh festivities would be a little, a little much.
Okay, right. Yeah, I.
I think you did it.
You you did it. I mean, that month was a a an action-filled, informational-filled month.
It was fun. I enjoyed it.
Well, I think that you could do that again, um and maybe like you said, not so many things um this time, but uh it actually might um. Increase enrollment or, you know, or participation with the stuff that you did it last year. If you make it kind of like an annual celebration kind of thing.
Yeah, I just know we're gonna have to just, it's gonna have to be like an all-hands-on-deck thing more so than last year. Um cuz I like personally, like I'm, I'm starting a new job and I'm gonna be going back to school, so I really don't know how much time I'm I'm going to have.
Yeah, I think. Lorenzo raised this issue to me, said, you know, we we do have limited resources, we have limited capabilities, maybe we gotta. Kinda think about focusing on a couple of things you really wanna do and do them well.
Right.
Spread so thin.
Yes.
You know, I mean, we could do something as simple as that. I mean, I think the event they had at the library was was great. Um up till with Halloween, contribute, you know, some volunteer time when they do their. The thing they did at the the the. At the library, but uh I don't know if I, you you wanna do a full commitment to a bat month. It's a lot of work and. I'm not sure exactly how much enthusiasm there was across the town for putting up bat houses.
Yeah, unfortunately. I think that we should still do something though to bring attention to it, you know what I mean?
Maybe like all in one day, though, like if we did a lecture again, um maybe do the lecture and the bat house on the same day. You know.
Yeah, we might, you know, maybe we we just do some something as simple as a lecture, a Zoom lecture.
Mm-hmm.
Uh bring in a speaker, um set it up, just do a Zoom lecture, send it out, remind people that bats are good. Uh give people some instructions on how to do a bat house.
Yeah.
Remind people what we did last year and then. And then leave it at that, um instead of trying to do some big thing where we have a. You know, we construct bat houses and just, it's.
It's a lot.
Take it to a return of a dollar when we do that.
Yeah, aside a little closer to time, maybe like at the end of the summer or something, what to do exactly. We could just.
The the thing with that just is that Lorenzo just kinda wanted us to have, at least by like, we can't do it tonight, but like next month. Just have an idea of the three projects we were gonna commit to for the year, kind of a thing. So my thinking was I'll send out this list with the minutes tonight and then ask for other suggestions. Um you know, to be sent to the group and then um we can vote on them at the next meeting.
Okay, and then um I wanted to add to um to the um. Earth Day event, we can, we said we could go back and forth just to get that list. So we can send you ideas of stuff to to put into that mix of of the day at the park, right, Erin?
Yeah, I'll work on uh on Friday. I'll kind of like flush it out in a one-page thing and then I I can send it out.
Um I just, cuz I wanted to add to that, um we did, you know, with sustainable CT, but it was also with um. Uh the Conservation Commission, they did a series of lectures. I think it was in two thousand eighteen, it might have been in two thousand nineteen, but um. The River Smart Pledge um is just a really great thing to put out there. Um and people don't have to pledge necessarily to do it, but it's just got. Ecologically sound things to do about like washing your car and watering your lawn and um. Not flushing prescriptions and all these kinds of simple steps that you can take that um. Awareness to keeping the waters cleaner and safer and so that would be something to throw in there into that group. But I'll, I'll send you that, um Erin, so that we can put it on the list of the proposal of stuff to do.
Okay, I added it in to my notes here.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Tova, for contributing. Always great to have you on board. Uh so we really cannot vote on anything, uh does that, does that even pertain to closing the meeting and I just close it?
I think, I think we can close the meeting with unanimous.
No, the meeting will go on forever.
Yeah, I know. I think uh instead of the fact we didn't have our our forum, I think we did, at least in my mind.
Did pretty well.
Sorry to be a bother. Before we go. Before we go, I just wanted to ask Tova about, um she talked about doing the meet our trees. Um do we think that that might still happen too, that we could put on our list of things to do?
I will add it to the list.
If Tova's willing to do that still, if she can, thinks she can do that.
Um let me think about it. It sort of goes back and forth between meet our trees, which is kind of a difficult one. And easier might be um meet our wildflowers. Um just because of the logistics of, you know, having to go onto people's property and. Um it is Lorenzo made it sound like it was so easy to just, you know, photograph trees, but it's not so easy. You almost have to make a date with them, um whereas the wildflowers, you know, I know the wildflower is brown. And it might be easier to start with meet our wildflowers because they, it, you know, is an educational tool. Because I can just do them, you know, I I on, they're on our waysides. I don't have to make a date with them.
Yeah.
I don't have to do a playdate with them.
Well, I didn't want to volunteer you for that, but you just mentioned it before and I just thought it was such a great idea. If you want to do meet our wildflowers, I think we should throw that into the mix for sure of of our stuff to put out there, information-wise.
Lorenzo had a an idea for meet our trees that people would take photos of their own trees and send them to us. And and that's a much easier way to do it. Um, you know, a a favorite large trees and that and and do sort of like a photo contest idea on it.
Yeah, so they could, we could do it that way, have people send us ones and then we identify them.
Yeah, they're not mutually exclusive. I mean, we could do them both, um you know. Uh go back and forth between them or have a month that's wildflowers and a month that's trees or something like that.
I just love that idea when you mentioned it to me. So if you're still willing to do that, I think we should definitely keep that on the. On the um things to do.
Me our trees, me our wildflowers presentation where. Somebody hosts a Zoom meeting where you show pictures of the wildflowers and here's. There's a wildfire, this is what it is. Here's a tree and this is what it is.
I was thinking of more like a Zoom thing, you know, I mean, not a, not a Zoom thing, I mean, a. A um social media thing that we would have it on the Facebook page and just have a little profile of it.
Yeah, yeah, so. And we could put it on the Facebook page and they, so and so sent this in, this is the kind of tree it is.
Yeah, this is, uh you know, this this beautiful sycamore and it lives thus and so place and. Um it it's, you know, a beautiful majestic tree and um, you know, send in your trees. Um that sort of thing. And then have, you know, also have a, a have your. If you, you've ever seen this adorable little wildflower, it um, you know, it's it like the. The Wayfarer vine or something like that. Say, okay, this is the Wayfarer vine, this is. It, um, you know, it's, it, like the, the Wayfarer vine or something like that, say, okay, this is the Wayfarer vine, this is what it looks like. Um, friend of mine sort of crazily went around tacking these little, uh, you know. Wanted. Look for this, you know, look for this little wildflower and, um, a- around her town, you know, she just went around. Uh, posting them all over the place on town like a missing persons thing.
That's so cute. Well, I think it would get people engaged too, maybe with more with the Conservation Commission site and, um, website. Facebook page and that sort of thing.
May- maybe they would see some wildflowers that, that are on their lawn and they wouldn't be running out there with weed killer.
Exactly, you know, you say, okay, this is, this is a little wildflower, it, it hosts. Um, this insect and that insect and the other insect and, um, you can learn so much, just. I, I, I mean, one reason why I would love to do the project is there I would learn too.
Yeah, and then that was, um, something I wanted to add to, um, Erin, was the, uh. Um, alternatives to spraying your lawn in the spring, I think we need to, you know, put that out there immediately, uh, Earth Day. When people start spraying and then give them the resources. To, uh, have alternatives like the cedar spray and, and all of that stuff and, um. I actually, a couple years ago, was able to, uh, talk to the guy and, um. He's a Connecticut resident who developed Avenger, I think, is the product. Um, I know, Tova, you mentioned something about that it wasn't as. Great as we thought it was, but, um, and I can talk to you more about that later, but also just to put that out there to alternatives to spraying your lawn and. I got a coupon for people who wanted to buy, um, for Roxbury to, to get some percentage off. If they wanted to buy the Avenger spray, um, that's ecologically friendly. Um, that was developed by a guy here in Connecticut. Um, so that would be something that I would love to include into the Earth Day thing too. Just awareness about, you know, people spraying stuff and growing things and all of that.
I've given up a long, I gave up a long time ago on a beautiful lawn, I have. Ground cover, just let it grow.
My yard is wild and beautiful.
That's the way I look at it.
Again, I, I really think it's, um, people just react to neighbor perception and, and if we make it clear that. We, we love it when a lawn looks wild, that's what we want, you know, th- this is a positive thing, there's nothing negative about this. And I think that will go so many miles.
I think so.
Yeah. Um, I'll, I'll say one more thing, the, the. Uh, I don't know where I read this, I might have read it online. There's a young lady in, uh, New Milford, you've got the. The, the, you can become a, like a bee-friendly town. So, New Milford just.
I read that too.
Yeah, bee-friendly town, it's just, I thought, gee, you know. We could probably get her to come and give a talk here, she, um, she's a student at, uh, I think UNH. Um.
Oh, yeah, I'm all for that, love that. Bee-friendly town, good.
Yeah, she, she, they, they started this initiative in, uh, New Milford and I got credentials to be a designated bee-friendly town.
Hey, guys, I'm sorry, my, my phone's gonna die soon and that'll end the meeting for all of us.
I will, I will, uh, I will look, uh, look into this a little further, report back at the next meeting. Uh, are we all done, folks?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's it.
Uh, although it's meaningless, I'll make a motion to postpone the meeting.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Any second, all in favor?
I'll second it.
Favor, I'm not avoiding this.
All right, guys, we're done, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Congratulations to Lorenzo, I don't know, he's not around, but, uh, I'll send him a note. He's gonna have his hands full. Between all the commissions he's on, all the volunteer groups he, and now he's got a baby, you know, oh, God. All right, guys.
Bye-bye.
Good evening, good night.
Night, night.
Night, everyone.